Good evening and welcome to this evening's City Council Meeting for the City of University Place. My name is Steve Worthington. I'm the Mayor Pro Tem and I'll be chairing this evening. Mayor Belisi is not available for tonight's meeting. We'll be starting that meeting in just a moment and before we do, I had a couple of things I wanted to review with you, our public and our council members as well. We have a few special rules. We are conducting this meeting in accordance with Governor Inslee's Emergency Order Providing for Public Meeting Act, or Open Public Meeting Acts done remotely by electronic media, which we're obviously doing this evening. With that, I'm going to start with the city clerk conducting our role and let's see. If you could please go ahead and call.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Figaroa?
Councilmember Figaroa, present.
Councilmember Keel?
Councilmember Keel, present.
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee?
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, present.
Councilmember McCluskey?
Councilmember McCluskey, present.
Councilmember Fleming?
Councilmember Fleming here.
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington?
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, present.
Mayor Belisi. Mayor Pro Tem, you have a quorum.
Thank you. In a moment, I will ask for a motion to excuse Mayor Belisi from tonight's meeting. Before I do that, I did want the public to be aware of the mayor's absence this evening. Yesterday, the mayor's father, Donald McDonald, passed away somewhat suddenly. I know here with the City Council, all of us are saddened by that. And we really have Mayor Belisi and her family in our thoughts tonight. With that, I would like to request a motion to excuse Mayor Belisi from this evening's meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move that we excuse Mayor Belisi.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any objections to excusing Mayor Belisi from this evening's meeting? I see no objections and the excuse is granted. And then it's Councilmember Figaroa. Would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And this evening, it is also, we presented an agenda there. We do seek to have an amendment on that agenda. There was a change in our order, at least we'd like to do that. And with that, I'd like to request a motion to amend the agenda to allow item number eight to follow item number nine in order to fit the scheduling of some of our special guests later on tonight.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Councilmember Keel. I'd like to move that we put item nine before my item eight on our agenda tonight.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion in a second to amend tonight's agenda and approve. Are there any objections? Any objections to the amendment or to the approval of the agenda as amended then? I don't see any and with that, the agenda is approved. That brings us to presentations and this evening we have an opportunity to hear about how Pierce Transit is performing in our community. And to help us with that, we have several members of the Prince Pierce Transit team, including Alexandra Mather and Lindsay Schimmel, if I pronounced that almost right. Alexandra, would you like to start us off?
I would. Thank you so much. And Lindsay, correct? You're going to share our presentation, correct?
Correct, I will.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. So, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Worthington and members of the council. My name is Alexandra Madden, the Government Relations Administrator for Pierce Transit. It is good to see you, Commissioner Keel, our longest sitting commissioner at Pierce Transit. Thank you for your many years of service. So tonight, we wanted to give you guys a quick update on how the agency has done over the past year, given the circumstances of COVID, and then talk about some activities down in the state legislature and some upcoming projects and how service has fared for UP over the past year and into the future. So with that, when, as a public agency, as everyone at this table knows, when COVID hit, we were unsure about the fiscal solvency of the future for the agency. And so Pierce Transit took really quick action and we furloughed several employees, which coincided with the service that we had to cut. And we also paused several projects. Fortunately, we have welcomed or seen retirements so that we are back to, we have steadied the employment situation for our operators. And so we're really excited about that. And we are continuing to move forward on especially funded projects. The agency, for the first time, passed a continuing resolution for their budget. And but then at the March, or I'm sorry, not March, February board meeting, the agency did pass the 2021 budget. And we also, I would say, like, we have learned so much from COVID and transit in general. And one of the biggest things is that we've learned the differences between commuter service, which is like your sound transits, your water taxis, et cetera, and local service. So about a year ago, when COVID really hit the community, ridership on commuter services dropped 90% where and ridership still remains down 80% for commuter services across the state. Whereas local services like your Pierce Transits, your Community Transits, those mid-sized transit agencies, we lost about 70% of our ridership and then have continuously seen ridership go back up. So now we're down about 45% and we know that students were 25% of our ridership. So we're not completely full, but we're not far off. Once schools open, we will be back on our way up to pre-COVID levels. That being said, like, we know that COVID has fundamentally changed the way public transportation will need to deliver in the future. And so I'm sure many of you have heard that our CEO, Sue Dreyer, announced her retirement. She will be moving on in June at the LIVIS. And we look forward to a new CEO coming in and leading us kind of into the next chapter of public transportation in Pierce County. But, you know, we're excited about it. It really is an opportunity to evaluate. I mean, COVID gave us a ton of data. We know which routes are essential, you know? Even at the peak, we're still moving almost 9,000 people a day. So we know we're helping people get to their essential jobs. We're helping them get to doctor's appointments and the grocery store and, you know, the things that the bedrock of our community that keeps moving. So we're really proud to have the honor to serve those people and we're excited about the future. Next slide, please. So that brings me to a quick update. In December, the agency funded a Bus Rapid Transit System Expansion Study. We are currently building our first Bus Rapid Transit line, which is the current Route 1. It serves downtown Tacoma, touches Tacoma Dome Station, so we get that regional connectivity. And then it goes down Pacific Avenue down to Stanaway. The system expansion study will help identify which of the next four routes we get to work on first. We are highly confident that because of ridership and density and other factors, that it will be the current Route 2, which does serve University Place. This study will also inform which propulsion systems the buses will be. We know that we want them to be zero emission. So whether that's electric or hydrogen cell or some other technology, we're going to lean heavily on that study to help inform that decision. Electrification is the word of the day and we know that Congress is, Congress and the state, like, everyone is really excited about electrification. And we're very excited about it, too. We have three electric buses now. We're bringing on six more in the next couple of weeks. And we have a great partner in Tacoma Public Utilities. You know, they're a highly sophisticated utility that has the resources and the expertise to help us develop and inform this network. They're also, you know, they have an entire department focused on, you know, studying what is emerging. And so we have heard from them that hydrogen fuel cell is a better, a better way to move really heavy vehicles. And 60-foot articulated buses are that. But, you know, there's a lot to talk about. But it's an exciting time and we look forward to partnering with our community and the utility to figure out what that next system in line will look like. So we have had a great, we've had great success this session working with our Pierce County Legislative Delegation. If we are fortunate enough to have the opportunity, if the transportation package is passed, we have our prime sponsor in the House is Representative Branowski. And he has agreed to bring forward a request of $10 million to get us all the way up to construction for BRT 2. So, you know, we know that the House and Senate are very far apart right now on, you know, what a transportation package looks like, but it's been done before, so we're just crossing our fingers. So, you know, should this move forward, absolutely, UP will be invited to come join the table. And I personally, I love what UP have, what you all have done with your downtown core. I think it's just a beautiful amenity built there. And so I see Bus Rapid Transit as very complimentary to your foresight in developing that area. So I want to thank you for that. And I think with that, I'll hand it over to Lindsay.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself there. Okay, so back to the slideshow. Lindsay Zamel, Principal Planner with Pierce Transit. I work in the Scheduling Division, oversee the current delivery of services and what those timetables and schedules look like. We did want to share with you tonight, just recognizing that while Pierce Transit, people think buses, we have our shuttles as well as our van pools, which are very active within the City of University Place. So we appreciate your support. If you have large employers or employment districts that you foresee future growth growing into, please keep us in mind as you talk with those land uses that are thinking about coming to University Place. One of the projects that we have been able to undertake due to the pandemic is going out and doing a comprehensive assessment of all 2,200 bus stops within our system. We are currently working on a bus stop balancing project that will be analyzing and thinning out bus stops throughout the system to create efficiency and improve speed and reliability for your next bus ride. We will be posting the stops in mid-March, where the residents and citizens will have an opportunity for approximately four weeks to submit their comments to Pierce Transit in regards to the stop. And then we're also providing distances, walking timeframes on how far it would be to get to the next stop within that line. We will remove the stops permanently in the September service change. So the stops may still be in place as we're taking comments and suggestions and all stops will be serviced through September. The City of University Place's ridership activity did not decrease as much as some other areas throughout the pandemic. As you see, your 2019 numbers are shown in the blue graphs there. And then the Kelly green is your 2020 numbers, looking at a 49% decrease through total activity. So this is people getting on and off the bus within city limits of University Place. You do have three routes, Route 2, 52, and 53, and a total of 93 bus stops within city limits. For our March service change, we focused on Sundays. Unfortunately, in September, we had to focus on removing service from Sundays and we are able to improve that again. One of the biggest impacts for the City of University Place is our trunk route, Route 2, has 16 restored trips. We will be back to 30-minute frequencies and 100% Sunday service. That will begin on March 21st. All of the service hours that we are increasing in March were dedicated to Sundays. Route 52 and Route 53 are going back to 60-minute frequencies for the majority of the day and have six restored trips for each of them. That concludes the presentation from Pierce Transit this evening. We are happy to answer any questions you may have.
I also wanted to add, I wanted to thank Commissioner Keel for sending a letter on behalf of Pierce Transit and helping, helping move our ask with the legislature forward. So thank you so much.
That's great to hear. Good. I wish you the best with all of that. And thank you for the update.
And thank you for the update. Uh, Council, do we have any questions out there? We can, um, go with raised hands and Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, two, two questions. One, Lindsay, I'm dying to ask you because you have such a unique last name. Do you have family in Gig Harbor?
Yeah, there's a few generations that have changed.
You have an awesome family, so we're, we're pleased to have you. I know several of your family members. Uh, I have two questions for both either you, Lindsay, or Alexandra. And one is with the decrease in revenue and the secondary to the ridership, how is Pierce Transit funding the expansion, uh, in their program for 2021? And then the second was, you know, with the decrease in revenues and the increase in service, how do you balance that and where were those additional funds come from?
Um, I'll go ahead and take a, um, stab at this Councilmember Fleming. So unfortunately, we have had to decrease our service hours for our fixed route to make our budget balance. And we do not have the funds to be back to pre-COVID levels. Uh, we have taken, um, slimming, uh, aspects to capital projects and have pushed out in some manners some capital investments that may have needed to go beyond maybe an, add an extra 12 months to a project. But, uh, we are working and working in efficiencies and looking for these improvements like the bus stop balancing project, hoping to try to recover some of that time that, that can get back to having more service in the system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Uh, we have time for just, for just one more question and Councilmember McCluskey has her hand up. The Councilmember?
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have just a, a couple, one is clarifying question. When you were talking about removing the, the bus stops, is, is that, I'm trying to get clear on that. Is it, are you targeting certain amount of bus stops that you need to remove in order to stay solvent? Or are you looking at it strictly not from a financial feasibility, but for a, uh, the best service you use?
Yes, we're actually looking at it at a site-by-site case. So, uh, the, the quality of the stop, whether it meets our safety standards, um, if there's, um, amenities there, if, if it has a high ridership volume, all of the information and data that we have, uh, for each stop is taken into consideration as we look at whether it's the appropriate stock to balance. Um, one big deciding factor is over years, um, our agencies have celebrating, celebrated 40 years last year. And, um, we are very generous. And if someone called and asked for a stop, you would get a stop nearby. And they end up getting really, really close to each other sooner or later once you start pleasing everybody in that manner. So, uh, this really is looking at, you know, as, as we know, we need to have balance in our transportation systems and, and other, uh, infrastructure systems. This is just one of those balancing efforts that we're doing for transit.
Right, and to tangent on what you just commented on, Lindsay, uh, there are some stops that may not have a high efficiency or high ridership, but is essential for seniors and for, uh, ableism to ensure that they are able to, to have the transit that, that they need. And so I like, uh, everyone to be sensitive to that and also to ensure that you have the public outreach to reach the, uh, the people that are impacted with the senior population as well as the ableism.
Yeah, as, as, as we look at aging in place and, um, being, being able to provide a sense and a, um, a reality of identity for the transportation needs of all of our users. We will be taking public comments. Please, if, um, any of you receive personal comments, feel free to reach out to myself or Alexandra and we will, um, provide it to the appropriate people at Pierce Transit. And, uh, all of that information is very valuable to us as we consider. The stops that are being posted aren't the final stops. The public process is still open.
Well, with the senior population, hopefully you have a, a way to them electronically to reach them. Many of them are not computer savvy to ensure that you get their input and buy-in and, and at least acknowledge that things could change and, or if they did change for them, how to make a secondary accommodations so they can, uh, get to their essential appointments and social engagements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. And, uh, Alexandra and, uh, Lindsay, thank you very much for your information tonight and a good chance to understand how Pierce Transit is serving the UP community and, uh, and our citizens. And a chance for us also to know about some outreach opportunities our citizens be interested in, too. So appreciate all of that. And with that, uh, I think we're going to move on to the public comment side of our meeting. Great. Thank you all. Um, as we come up to the public comment, I did also want to, uh, read, uh, under our, uh, rules, how public participation is conducted. And, uh, let's see, participation in public comments will be accepted by the following methods. Written comments will continue to be accepted by email. Comments received before 5:30 PM, uh, will be electronically provided to the City Council for their consideration. This evening, we have not received any comments, uh, in written format. Uh, subject to technology limitations, of course. Uh, we also provide for telephone or telephonic communications and comments as well. The information on how to contact us during the meeting at this phase is published on our agenda, uh, on the city's website and, uh, and other methods that our agenda is distributed. It has the conference ID along with the contact information. With that, do we have any public comments?
There are no additional public comments received, Mayor Protem.
All right, well, thank you. Uh, then, uh, we have no public comments at this point in the evening and we can move on then to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, this is, uh, Councilmember Keel. I move approval of our consent agenda.
Second.
Council. Very good. Councilmember Keel, and we have, uh, along with a second, uh, are there any objections to approval of the consent agenda? Any changes or objections? Once, twice, and final, and the consent agenda is approved as distributed. Thank you. Uh, and that brings us to our steady session this evening, where, uh, as noted with our earlier adjustment, we're going to be starting with, uh, uh, discussion on our housing action plan. And we'll be doing that with the, uh, Director, uh, David Swindale, uh, with his help and with the help of Clay White, who I'm gonna actually lead to David to introduce for us. David, are you ready? Looks like it.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, this is Mayor Protem, members of the City Council, um, David Swindale, Planning and Development Service's Director. And this evening, uh, we're going to bring you up to date on the progress of our housing action plan. And I'd like to introduce, um, Clay White, who is a principal with, or, uh, a lead planner, lead planner with LDC, um, Consultants LLC and is the consultants that we selected to help us with our housing action plan. Just by way of, um, uh, a reminder, uh, we were able to receive a grant, uh, which we did not have a match for, uh, requirement for just under $100,000 to develop a housing action plan. Uh, there are a lot of, um, legislation, especially in 2019 and 2020, regarding, uh, housing and housing affordability. Uh, there are amendments to the Vision 2050, uh, with emphasis on housing strategies as well as some additional housing element legislation that's actually in the, uh, sessions, the legislation legislative session this year. So this is a real, uh, hot topic and, uh, you'll have our presentation. Then after this, you'll hear about a, another, uh, regional, uh, bit of work that's being contemplated. So with no further ado, Mr. White?
Great, uh, thank you so much. It's an honor to be in front of the council tonight. And, um, just by way of background, before joining the private sector, I think four years ago, I spent 16 years serving cities and counties throughout Washington State. So, um, just am thankful for the hard work that councils do and staff. You have a amazing staff. Uh, I, when I, I work all around the region now and, uh, seeing longevity in a team is just, it's not like it used to be. And so getting to work with a team like you have here, uh, you should be proud of the staff that you have. It's, it's rare this, these days and kind of top to bottom. It's a great team, which makes this job a lot of fun, so it's great to be here. Um, I think we're gonna load up a presentation and, and we can kind of walk through some slides and then I'm gonna hand it over to David, who's gonna do a few more. So we're here just to provide you an initial briefing on the housing action plan, kind of what we've done up to date. We can go to the next slide. And we can go one more. So our main objectives tonight is we'd like to, uh, brief council members on the project schedule so you have a firm understanding of where we are and, and the upcoming tasks, that you understand the project background, the goals and the work completed thus far. The council members receive an overview of the draft housing action plan so you understand what's in the plan. And it, what's really important is, um, there's lots of great information in there and we want to make sure that you have an understanding of where you can access that easily so you can pick on the things that you really want to and, and not have to read a very long document otherwise, uh, on things that maybe you have less interest in. And then council members share their responses to the draft housing action plan. So we can go to the next slide. So we'll go over pieces of it and then we'll ask a few key questions. And if you have questions, this is a good time. But we have lots of time in the process to be collecting these over the next couple of months. So, uh, briefly, we'll go over to the project schedule. Uh, go ahead and go forward. So we started this work with the city, uh, last summer and I'm really happy to just kind of alert the council that we are on time and on track, on budget. These are always good things. So, uh, we started out last July with the kind of a project kickoff and project charter. We, um, completed an analysis of your housing policies and did a public outreach plan. Uh, and then the works begun. So we've completed our housing needs assessment and then we've, uh, completed a draft housing action plan, which we'll be discussing tonight. And actually, the comment period where we've kind of taken that out to our advisory committee and published that on the website, uh, that, that first comment period just ended, uh, a couple of days ago. So I haven't had a chance to regroup with David yet, but this is the time when we're taking comments and then we'll make changes to the document. So this is good timing. The, the arrows indicate where we're meeting with you at this point. So we're meeting tonight for a briefing and then we have a, a hearing that we're looking at in early June. Uh, and then in between times, we're also meeting with the Planning Commission later this week for a briefing and then we'll be meeting, do a hearing with them as well. So the public participation process will continue over the next four months. Next slide. And so this is kind of what those dates looking forward. So I especially wanted to highlight, um, you know, that we've scheduled the council hearing and, and possible adoption of this plan on June 7th. So as you're, as you're listening tonight, if you have questions and would like to spend some time talking to myself or understanding more about what we're doing and why, please know I'm certainly available to you for one-on-ones or small groups. It's really important that we have these conversations, but I also know you're very busy. So however, we can kind of tailor these conversations to your need, that's what we like to do. Uh, but we've got a good schedule moving forward. We can move forward one slide. Okay, so now we're gonna get a little bit into the housing action plan overview. We just really want to under, have you understand kind of soup to nuts how we've put this together. Uh, you can go forward once. So we'll review kind of the project background. Why are we doing this project? Um, the public participation approach, uh, the housing action plan overview of kind of what's in the plan and, and, and kind of why. And then, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to David and he's gonna introduce the plan elements, uh, get into the kind of details a little bit about what you're gonna see in there. One kind of note you'll see on some of these pictures, there's some aerial photos. So we've done some drone photos for you. Uh, we can share those with the city as part of this project as well. It's kind of neat to be able to include those to show all the housing that you've built, yeah, within the city. Next slide. So, uh, this project really stemmed out of a House bill, uh, in 2019, House Bill 1923. So there was recognition, we have a regional housing crisis since 2019. Obviously, housing prices have gone, uh, nothing but up, certainly over the last few months. Um, and so they passed this bill that gave local governments a number of options to apply for grants to look at housing issues. Uh, and one of those options was to complete a housing action plan. There's just a, kind of a few things that I'd like to alert you to. Our, our deadline for completion is June 30th of this year. And just to make it very clear, this process does not, uh, result in any legislative changes. So we're gonna identify possible actions that you could take and David will go through this tonight, but there's no requirement for you to actually, uh, make any legislative changes as part of this. This is just kind of like setting the foundation for a future conversation. So I think that's really important. Uh, and then, you know, when we talk about housing and the cost of housing, sometimes people lump it all into one category. And I think it's important that, you know, the city is, is one piece of the puzzle when it comes to housing. I mean, you create the zoning or it's the fees or the types of housing that you might allow, but you don't control the cost of lumber, uh, the availability of people to build homes. I mean, there's lots of, there's, uh, you know, you're just a piece of that puzzle, but it all helps, uh, towards working towards housing solutions. So that's what we're aimed at with this project. Next slide. So there's two, uh, primary pieces of a housing action plan. The first is kind of looking at what's going on with housing in your, in your city. And if you are a, uh, data person, you'll love a housing needs assessment. So it's quantifying the existing and projected housing needs for all income levels. Uh, we analyzed the population employment trends and then we provide an evaluation of the success in attaining planned, planned housing type. So, you know, what is the housing that you're planning for and what's actually occurring? Uh, and, uh, so there's a lot of data that we've provided you. And, you know, maybe I'm just a planner, but I find it very interesting. It's, you know, to be able to jump into that, those materials. So that's all there for you. So once you do the housing needs assessment, you kind of have a baseline of what's happening in your community in terms of housing. And then it's, well, what are some things that we could do about it? And that's a housing action plan. So you're considering strategies to minimize displacement of low-income residents as redevelopment occurs. You're developing strategies to increase the supply of housing. So you're, you're looking at how could we do that? You'll see in this plan, we have, uh, strategies that we've developed and then we have implementing actions. And David will walk through those in just a couple of minutes. And then we'll have a, i- i- the statute says we have to have a schedule of programs and actions to implement the recommendations. So eventually we'll have a table that will say, you know, when, when will you be reviewing these recommendations in the plan? And it just kind of keeps you on track for the future. And, and we've talked about some ideas of how you might move those, uh, forward in the future if you choose to move forward, uh, with, uh, what we've proposed. Next slide. But, you know, one of the neat things about this project is the timing. So under the Growth Management Act, you, you know, the city has already required to plan for people and employment and housing. Um, and so, you know, you actually have a comprehensive plan update that will be coming due in 2024, which is, uh, looking out to 2044. Just, just when you finish one, you start the next one. Uh, it happens every eight years. And so here's what the opportunity statement is for this project. It's that very rarely do you get to pull out one of the issues you, you study in a comprehensive plan and just have a nice discussion about that with your community as a council. And so, you know, usually the housing discussion is mixed in with planning for people and capital facilities and parks. And it's this big update where you're moving all these things forward. But, you know, it's good to be able to talk about housing. And, and it, I think this is kind of a, uh, a great opportunity to kind of tease out issues before you start this update. So, you know, you're not gonna be starting from scratch. You're gonna have a playbook of things that you could consider as part of that process. So, you know, the, the timing's perfect for this project. And it's, it's not asking you to really do anything you're not already required to do. It just lets you focus on it, which is neat. Next slide. So, um, in addition to, you know, getting back to the housing action plan, it also calls for public participation. So, um, the statute talks about providing for public participation from community groups and, and local builders and realtors. And so in order to do that, we had a housing advisory committee. Uh, and they've held two meetings and they helped us get to the point where we are now and provided wonderful comments. And, uh, we're hoping that they also participate as this process moves forward. And then, of course, we're doing our Planning Commission, uh, briefings and, and council as well. Next slide. In addition, we've, uh, making sure we're doing, uh, reaching out on the city website. We've done some newsletter articles, uh, we'll have several comment periods. And then And then, you know, I am hoping that we leverage our advisory committee because you'll see on the next slide that, uh, they have all sorts of backgrounds, uh, that are just, have blended perfectly to kind of the discussion that we framed up. And we can go to the next slide. So this was the advisory committee that, uh, we've put together. You'll recognize that you have one of your esteemed planning commission members, uh, Commissioner Quisenberry, which was really helpful hearing from his perspective. But, you know, you have folks from the, uh, the building side, from economic development. And then, you know, hearing from, uh, transit and human services and people that are on, seeing things, housing in a different perspective. They had really, really strong conversations and their information that they provided, uh, was very helpful as we drafted this plan. I, as we get to the final plan, you know, I'm hopefully going to pull some quotes from them so we can add them and provide some great context. Uh, but also just be tapping them on the shoulder throughout to make sure we, we hear from them as this process moves forward. Next slide. You're not going to be able to read this and that's okay. So this is pulled from the executive summary, um, of the housing action plan. But what I always want to make sure is that, um, you know, planning, uh, can get very technical and it's really hard to explain to folks. And so I wanted to make sure that we could create a graphic so that people that want to be involved in housing, but maybe they're not, uh, they don't know everything about zoning codes could. So we created this graphic. I had my, my 14-year-old read it and asked her if she could understand what a housing action plan is. And the answer was yes. So I thought we were, we're off on the right foot. So, um, you know, this is kind of bringing full circle of what we're trying to accomplish. And it starts with, you know, some key questions, you know, that probably impact all of us. You know, will young families be able to find housing that is affordable in our community in the future? Um, as our friends and family age, will there be housing to ensure that they can afford to stay in our community? And, you know, how do we ensure housing is available for teachers, caregivers and single income families? So, you know, asking just key questions like that. And then, um, you know, you funnel that through your housing needs analysis. You know, how affor, how, how affordable is housing today? How is the city expected to grow and change in the future? What kind of housing will meet current and projected future needs? So what will we need to meet that demand in the future? And then we, we've worked that through public engagement. Um, so we've developed that website. We've, uh, had community-led advisory committee that helps talk about the housing that they'd like to see in the community or issues that have, have come up. And then we come to you and the planning commission and, and work it through that process. And, you know, based upon all of that information, then, um, the steps of, then the housing action plan outlines a variety of proactive strategies and actions that the city could take or not to help address current and future housing needs within the city. So that's kind of full circle of, of how we get from A to Z. Next slide. So this is the front cover of the, uh, ha- housing action plan, and you'll find that on the website along with a lot of other documents. Uh, and so just a little bit about the layout, we, we do have an executive summary and an introduction. And if you're wanting just to just get a flavor for what we're doing, uh, that's a good place to start. We've made this, you know, these documents are very long, so people don't typically pick them up, but it's digital. And what we've done is created quick links between every section of the document. So if you go to the table of contents, you can select something that you would like to read about and it will take you directly to that page. You can then go to the top of any page in the document and click table of contents and it will return you to the table of contents. So, um, that makes it just so much easier to navigate. So what we have for you is that executive summary and introduction. Um, we then have a housing and needs assessment summary. So the actual housing needs assessment is very long. It's in an appendix. So we've provided a summary of what's going on with housing in, in university place. We then get to the housing action plan, which is your, uh, strategies and actions, which David will go over in just a second. And then we have a ton of appendix materials, which are in the back. Um, and everything from a copy of the statute that enabled us to do this project, uh, to, um, uh, you know, some, the strategy and that kind of action summaries and definitions and other things. So, um, that's kind of how we've laid this out and we hope that you find it useful. At this point though, I'm going to turn it over David, to David, and then he can get into the exciting stuff.
Yes, thank you, Clay. Thank you very much. Uh, that was a great introduction to the housing action plan. Um, I think, uh, the executive summary and housing needs assessment summary are well done, uh, and very clear. Uh, I encourage the city council to go to our website, uh, under, uh, the housing action plan. And like Clay said, there's a number of lea- uh, links there, including the draft housing action plan that we're directing the public to, uh, via our newsletter and other means. The, next slide, please. So the housing action plan relies on three principal strategies to first increase the variety of our housing types. And second, to provide some incentives, uh, for producing housing, uh, both affordable housing as well as market rate. And then also to mitigate displacement. Uh, a lot of the affordable housing, if you would, in the city is the older housing stock. And as prices go up, uh, and areas get redeveloped, uh, that forces those, uh, lower cost units out and, and causes displacement. And the third strategy is to reduce the development costs and time it takes to build housing. Next slide, please. So each strategy contains or is implemented through a series of actions. And this is just one example of numerous actions that are fit into those three categories that I just, uh, described. Uh, this one is to, uh, fee waivers or for reductions in affordable housing. Uh, this is where we might, uh, waive or reduce impact fees, uh, or, uh, permitting fees in order to incentivize, uh, certain types of housing, affordable housing. It includes, uh, what other communities are doing this here. We have examples from Olympia, Mercer Island, Shoreline, Woodville and Bonnie Lake. All are doing something in, along these lines of an action. And then it also talks about the benefits and drawbacks of doing this, uh, type of an action. Next slide, please. So here is a series of actions that are, uh, proposed, uh, for the city to consider exactly as, as Clay said, Mr. White said, is, these are things that we could think about doing, but we don't actually necessarily have to do. And they provide us a good, uh, examples of policies that we could put in place or programs when we do have to, um, update our comprehensive plan in 2024. And it's interesting because a number of these things are what I consider low-hanging fruit, things that we are already doing. So the first one here is, uh, a sample is to review our form-based code for impacts on housing variety. This is something that we've already, uh, the city council has already recognized and is planning to do. Um, as part of the planning commission work plan, that's the, the last thing, uh, on this year's planning commission work plan is to review the form-based code, not necessarily just for the impacts on housing, but how well it's performing, uh, as, as the code itself. Uh, reviewing our mixed-use zones for different types of residential opportunities. Uh, looking at, uh, strengthening our definitions, uh, looking pro- to provide some more missing middle housing. Uh, and exploring the possibility of, of coming up with a new residential zone to, to emphasize that. Uh, we do have small lot and development standards in the code already. Uh, they have not produced a single development. Uh, they don't seem to be producing what, uh, is, uh, desired or marketable in this area, certainly up north and in King County. There are more examples of, of successful, uh, small lot development, uh, uh, projects, but not down here. So we really need to take a look at those and see why that's not working and see what we could do. Uh, we have AD regulations or accessory dwelling unit regulations, uh, but they are somewhat restrictive and, and we could review them along with our, um, other bulk regulations. Next slide, please. The next principal strategy is to incentivize highs, housing and mitigate, uh, displacement. Uh, right here, the MT MF, the multi-family tax exemption program. In fact, you're going to be studying that very issue this evening. So again, uh, sort of low-hanging fruit, stuff you're already doing. It's in the action plan. Um, looking at, um, inclusionary zoning or density bonuses, not so much a, uh, thing in our form-based code areas because we don't have a maximum density. But in our multifamily zones, uh, we could incentivize, uh, or continue to incentivize, um, density or the, the lower affordability units, uh, based upon allowing a larger density or higher density. Uh, fast-track the permit process for certain permit types. Um, establish a, um, and maintain a monitoring program so that we can understand how well we're doing. And then also looking for additional sources of funding, uh, in addition to the 406, 1406 and home program. And, uh, we just did one recently, um, that was authorized by the state legislature last year. Uh, you did that last year. It's not a lot of money, but every little bit counts. And we can look at ways that we might work with other, um, groups, uh, other jurisdictions, districts to, um, leverage that money. Next slide, please. Okay. And of course, reduce the development costs and timelines. Uh, one of the things that the, um, they allow cities to do under the subdivision code is to allow us to do short plots of nine lots versus four. That would speed up, very much speed up, um, development of smaller subdivisions. Right now, uh, we just do four lot short plots and anything more than that requires a preliminary plat, a formal plat. That takes a lot more time. It's a, it's a longer process, requires them to go to a quasi-additional hearing versus being administrative. We could also raise our CIPA exemptions, uh, for new minor construction and allow, uh, administrative approval of final plots. Right now, uh, those come back to the city council for final approval and, uh, and they have to get back onto the city council agenda. Um, most jurisdictions no longer take it to the council. Uh, so this is something the city and I, attorney and I have both discussed in the past. Uh, and we could, uh, remove some of the infrastructure barriers to infill development. And, uh, sewers comes to mind, obviously, but, uh, and you know that we're all working on that as well. Um, next slide, please. So, um, the questions that we, uh, posed to the public right now and to the advisory committee uh, was, do these three strategies, uh, focus on, uh, issues that, that should be tackled? Or are there any others, uh, actions that we should consider? Um, should one or more of these ideas be modified or removed for con- from consideration? Uh, and are there issues we should explore and inform, uh, or information that we should, uh, bring back to the city council? So these are questions that are ongoing based upon the strategies and actions in the housing action plan. Uh, we'll be taking these first to the planning commission beginning this next Wednesday, asking them to review, uh, thoroughly review each of these strategies and all the actions associated with them. And then we're going to ask these four questions and, and, and formulate a recommendation for the city council to consider. And that's, um, I'm going to turn it back to Clay. For the next steps.
I think that we can probably just forward to one more slide and then we can, uh, hand it over for any questions that there, that we might have. So again, this is the schedule and what's nice about where we, how we've moved things along is not only will we have a, a good amount of time to engage with the planning commission, but again, if, if there's, if there's items that you're interested in, we're here to answer them and, and would love to have those conversations. So, um, I think there's, if, uh, at this point, we can take any questions that you might have.
All right. And very good. Appreciate that, David. Thank you. And Clay as well. Thank you. We've got about 10 minutes for questions and Councilmember Fleming has his hands up and, uh, I think is ready to start with questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protown. Unfortunately, because the presentation was lengthy, I got a, a lot of comments and a lot of questions. Bear with me. Okay. So first and foremost, uh, to Clay and, and David, thank you so much for the presentation tonight. It, it does show there's been a lot of thought and thoroughness that's gone into this to bring it to the council. But, you know, as you know, for every idea or concept that usually generates another question, uh, where we're going. So I'm just going to start from the top of my questions and just kind of work my way through it. Um, you know, one of the things we talked about, what you're, you talked about was, uh, public notice and, and making the public comments. I'm curious how we did that. And I, I did hear that part of it was done, uh, through internet. Uh, one of the lessons we've learned in COVID and scheduling immunizations, uh, has been the fact that a lot of citizens don't have access to the internet. Uh, so if they wanted to comment, how would they have gone about doing that? That's my first question.
Man, um, well, the other way that, um, well, that's a very good question. I mean, without internet, I was just thinking, I was just about to say, well, we have our newsletter, but again, that's electronic. Um, and, um, we have, uh, we're working on the flash vote. Of course, we have the website. So, uh, frankly, um, that's a very good question. I'm not sure that we have ultimately, uh, explored that as, as maybe as well as we should.
I think one thing we could do, David, since we have four more months for comments is put a, uh, the telephone contact number and that we can rearrange to get them a copy, uh, of the plan if they want to. And then they can attend those meetings and hearings. So that, that might be an easy fix to make sure that people can be engaged in that way as well.
Hey. Thank you. My, my next question has to do with the advisory committee, uh, housing advisory committee. Uh, there was a comment that was made that this is a committee of the community, yet when I looked at the membership of that, it really represents certain groups, not necessarily of our community. So I'm curious how we assemble that committee and where is the real opportunity for citizens that live in our community to participate in that? That seems like a pretty closed organization advising the city and the council, but not necessarily from this community on how we should move forward.
Yeah, we looked at, I was, uh, I was the one that put together that committee list, uh, with help of our consultants and others. Um, but we tried to find people who, uh, had expertise in affordable housing, in homelessness. Uh, and the people in our schools, we have a representative from the school district, uh, who works with disadvantaged, um, youth or, uh, people who are from our poor communities, those people who have, um, uh, free lunch programs, for example. And even some homeless students that live in our, uh, or go to our school district. Um, Brian Schmidt with Pierce County, uh, Human Services, um, Catholic Community Services. These are all people who work with individuals in our community who have, uh, needs for affordable housing. So, uh, yeah, we don't have a representative from, you know, we have, you know, our planning commissioner and our economic development commissioner. They might be considered citizens, but, uh, it was deliberately a smaller group. Um, with, uh, professionals who work with people in our community. Uh, certainly at the stage of the planning commission, we typically do go out, uh, and will be needing to find some way to connect with people, both who have, uh, the ability to use the internet, but those that don't as well.
You know, I just, I'm sorry, Clay, go ahead.
Just to add to that, the statute, the way it was set up, uh, for doing a housing action plan, talked about, uh, engaging with local builders, local realtors, nonprofit housing advocates and local religious groups in, in addition to community members. And so that's what kind of the advisory group is, you're getting kind of experts in housing to give you some information. And then you go out to the community in terms of trying to engage. COVID makes it more difficult. Uh, but we'll continue to do that over the next few months is provide opportunities to, uh, you know, have, have the, uh, community members, uh, come to planning commission and council and, and have other methods to be able to provide comments.
Awesome. I appreciate that. And I, I would just like to, to add, if, you know, as we do this, I am mostly, while I appreciate the wisdom of those on the committee, I certainly, as a, as a person who represents citizens in our community, I'd like to know what the citizens in our community, uh, have to say about this program. Cause that's where this is going to end up ultimately, uh, is in this community. Um, you, you talk about, uh, affordable housing. You you talk about affordable housing. What definition are we using for this process to define affordable housing?
Well, there's different levels of affordable housing. Basically, if you are spending more than 30% of your gross income on housing, then you're considered cost burdened. And you end up with people who earn in the median income or 60% of the median area income or, you know, 50 and 30 are different levels of people who have a different amount of housing cost burden. So we're talking about basically affordable housing. Who have who spend more than 30% of their income, gross income on housing per year. And it was interesting to find out in the housing needs assessment that we actually have a good amount of housing that's affordable for those people in our communities. However, there's a lot of people who are renting down that actually make more than and are using those units up. Now, can find those units. So where we have a lot of housing that's affordable, other people are occupying it.
You know, and I asked that question because in other lives that I've lived in public service, when we've talked about affordable housing, I've learned that that can mean different things to different people. And while most of us would like to think affordable housing is really that, it's for for those that are trying to get started, have a place to call home, don't have, you know, a lot of income that they want to have a roof over their head. Sometimes affordable housing really is out of reach for those individuals. So we just need to keep that in mind. I've got two other questions and then I'll yield here. You know, this is mostly to David, you know, all of our conversations since I've been on council in the brief time have really focused on increasing the density in this in this city. At what point do we reach that saturation point where we really can't keep squeezing it in, you know, and I've watched where we've taken lots that the original city ordinance has said, these are for housing, for houses lots, we've we've crammed in a fifth house to go with that. We keep compressing and compressing and compressing. At what point does the city, i.e. council and all of us, say enough is enough on that?
Well, that's a very good question, councillor. That's with the Growth Management Act and what is being, quote unquote, forecast for future growth in not only in the City of University Place, but entire region. This region is growing very rapidly, as you know. Housing is becoming less and less affordable. And we need to find some alternatives that are palatable for the people in our community while we continue to accommodate the growth. I agree that it, you know, with more growth comes more congestion and maybe the character of our community and our neighborhoods change over time. The best we can do is plan so that we don't get overwhelmed and and we do it in a way that we it's acceptable to the city. I don't think we'll be at a point that we can just say no more. I think there's always going to be some growth. There's going to be not only growth, but there's going to be churning. There's going to be people moving in and moving out, different age groups, people getting older. So we can just plan for our community for the best outcome.
And then David, my last comment, and this is more of a concern. I shared this with the city manager the other day when we were talking about growth in the city. The proposed strategies that you laid out for the council tonight to look at really strips away a lot of the safeguards we've had in the past for construction and creates, from my own perception, what appears to be a free for all for development university place without accommodating for the infrastructure to accommodate that growth. And as you pointed out, things become denser, but if we're not building an infrastructure, my greatest concern for the city is eventually, and I'm using an extreme example, we could end up like a South Hill. Where we didn't manage that growth and congestion is ungodly at peak hours during the day out there. I really would hate to see university place become a gridlock because we focused on growth, but did not focus on infrastructure to support that group. So that's my only hesitation with the type of proposals that are on the table tonight. And I would hope the council would take a little deeper dive on that before we bite that one off and and accept it. So with that, I will yield Mr. Mayor Protown, and I thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fleming. I appreciate your your questions and comments. For the rest of council, I do have three hands up with questions from council members. I also have our next series of presenters ready to step up as well with County Executive Danamire and Mayor Victoria Woodards as well. I'd like to certainly get to our council questions, but to the extent that we can make those as tight as possible. Councilmember Figaro, would you, you're next in line, and then Councilmember Lee, then Councilmember McCloskey.
This is Councilmember Figaro. Due to the time factor, I will deal with my questions with David later on.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Councilmember Figaro. Councilmember Lee.
Councilmember Protown, Lee, I don't really have any, I would like to reinforce two points that Councilmember Fleming made. One has to do with engagement with our community. That has always been an issue and it still is, how to engage our community. And if we are relying solely on internet, I believe we're not going to get accurate readout on how our community feels about this subject. Secondly, if the advisory, and this is to reinforce a point that Councilmember Fleming made. If the advisory committee is to provide us with a cross section of how our community feels about this subject. I look and it would appear that the, I know something about the community, the Catholic Community Center. I see that is basically a church based organization. Interestingly, we don't have a Catholic church in in UP. Neither do we have a synagogue or a mosque, but we have a lot of Protestant churches. And so I would recommend that we take a look at the makeup on this on this committee. Make sure it reflects exactly how our community feels. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lee. Appreciate that. And then Councilmember McCloskey.
Thank you, Mayor Protown. I too concur with Councilmembers Lee and Fleming about the diversity in the makeup that I have seen for giving for the committees for public input and to grow the outreach on that. And we do have a mosque in University Place. And that would be really, I would be really encouraged to get that population in because I know that population and they do have focused ideas on how to meet their own housing needs for their community. So I would like to see a lot more diversity and inclusivity in those committees, and that's what I'm going to look for. And also the impact of the of our apartments growth that we have in her city as well. What's the long term impact and sustainability? How is that going to grow wealth for our citizens? And not only wealth for our citizens, but stability for our university place population going forward and into the future. I think if we just focus on a lot of apartments for accessibility, I think that's a short term meeting the needs. It's not a long term outcome. So I would like to see that they're actually giving people a hand up that can grow them into something for a better future for everybody. And then also looking at university place housing needs within the region on how that transcends and dovetails and coordinates with what other jurisdictions are doing because we may not need so many apartments. Maybe we can tangent with those needs to the like, for example, the City of Tacoma. And so we may, our housing stocks mix will not be quite as 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 need assessment if we look at the the regional components and how that impacts us and how the the people live within that that region. So, you know, for those patterns, I would like to see a report on that. And to also figure out how to break down the barriers for the infill lots, build outs that you spoke spoke about in the beginning of your presentation on how we can, as the council, figure out a legislative approach to encourage and incentivize that, especially in the north end of University Place, while there's housing that can that are certainly on the verge, or if not already there for the need of redevelopment. Thank you.
All right.
Look at those items.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Let's see, Councilmember Keel, your hand is up. Do you have a quick comment?
I do, Mayor Protown. Thank you for this opportunity. And Clay, David, thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Keel, you muted somehow there. Was it we just, there we go.
Well, I was unmuted and I got muted again. Sorry. Thanks for your presentation, David and Clay. I really appreciate it. The question I have had to do with the tools underneath the housing kind of umbrella. One of the big needs that we have in our city, particularly around the the northeast part of our city is infrastructure. And I think someone mentioned infrastructure and particular sewers. And it's just missing, right? And we don't have it, haven't had it for, you know, a long, long time. And so I'm wondering under the housing, as we build housing and try to do these infills and try to do all that, are there mechanisms, are there programs, are there tools that we as a city can utilize to help build that infrastructure so that housing can be on top of it?
Yeah, absolutely. We are looking at ways that we can, and especially sewers is a great example. We've been working with the county utilities quite closely. And on extending sewer lines into our uncertain areas of the city, as you are well aware of. It is a challenge. Development pays for that principally, those extensions. So but the county has come up with some really innovative ways to do that. They have instituted some new programs that allow people to or developers to amortize sewer hookups over time, rent sewer capacity, for example, rather than having to pay for it all upfront.
Very good, David, and thank you. And council members, I'm actually going to take the chair's prerogative here with our agenda running just a little late and having our guests in the lobby. Councilmember McCloskey, I know you have a hand up. You have something briefly to add, or can I move on to this next item? Briefly to add, please go ahead.
Yes, Mayor Protown, it is brief. I just would like to recommend that the city council have another study session on this prior to the last because there is so many more questions that I would like to have answered.
Fair enough.
We really need to get this perfect, as perfect as we can. Because this is going to be a living document that's going to design how we do our future comprehensive plans and legislative actions. So I think we should have another study session prior to the consideration on June the 7th. That's that's my comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I think it's an excellent comment, and I'll discuss it with Mayor Belisi when she becomes available. And see if we can't add an additional study session on this. As a matter of fact, this evening, we have a theme of housing. So we start with working on our housing plan, which is a great place to start with a big picture side of it. And our next item is working on some more specifics about how to deal with affordable housing and and a initiative out there that many of you, many of you are familiar with to help us with that. And with that, I'd like to move on to hear about, for all of us, the South Sound Affordability Project. Mayor Victoria Woodard Woodard's river is here with us tonight, along with County Executive Bruce Danamire. And he and others will have an opportunity here to tell us about the South Sound Housing Affordability or project at Sharps, Shaps, I believe it is. And with that, I think it's a question of who would like to start. So who is leadoff on that to to start or start the presentation and the discussion for us this evening? Mayor Woodards, is that you?
I am here. Bruce Danmeyer was going to, Bruce was going to start us off, but he also said he was having some internet issues as well, and I don't see him.
You know, he was here for a few moments and then has, I don't see him at this point.
I'll go ahead and get started. We are a great team and I really enjoy doing this work with Executive Danmeyer, but I will get started. We're also joined this evening by John Howell, who I'll ask to turn on his camera at this time. John Howell is with the Cedar River Group, and they have been the consultants that we've been working with. I want to say a year probably hasn't been a year, but you know how quickly either time flies in some ways or time goes really slow. But let me start by saying I'm delighted to be here this evening with all of you. So before I turn it over to John very quickly, John's going to walk you through a short PowerPoint about kind of how we got here, but let me just give you just a brief history of why we're here. When I got elected mayor and started serving in 2018, I was picking up some work that former mayor Marilyn Strickland had done in trying to convene mayors around the conversation of homelessness. And when I got elected, I said, that's a really great conversation to have, but we need to go up the river. I am a believer that getting to root cause is how we will solve the problem. So I quickly reached out to Executive Danmeyer and then Councilmember Connie Lattenberg and said, can we have a regional conversation about housing? Because if we don't, if we don't fix the problem with housing affordability, and we now say affordability, accessibility. Oh, and there's Bruce in the lobby again, but how can we talk about all these issues? Because truly, what what happens in University Place or in Furcrest or in Puyallup or in any other city in Pierce County affects all of our cities. And although our needs are different, we have a great partnership in the county in a way to bring us together and really talk about how how we work together. And I'm really delighted that then Mayor, Mayor Kent, now Councilmember Mayor Kent Keel joined us and was a part of kicking that off. And we were really surprised that at our first meeting, we had over 90% of Pierce County represented in the room, which told us very, very clearly that this was an issue that that mayors wanted to talk about. So we started this mayor's roundtable. We've been working for over a year and now we are here more formally. I can't believe we've got it done in less than two years. Someone would say that takes a long time, but you all well know that in government, two years is like a lightning rod for us. So we are at a point now to more formalize this partnership. It is actually shape. South Sound Housing Affordability is actually actually shaped and the A is now squared for accessible, affordable and attainable. So we want to make sure we're addressing all needs, but we've now formalized, we are here tonight to talk to you about how we've gotten here, how we want to work together to move forward. And with that, I'm going to ask John Howell to go ahead and turn on his camera. I see Bruce's back. So the great thing about Bruce and I as partners is we can pinch hit for one another. So I let us off and Bruce will close us out, but John's going to take us to the PowerPoint presentation. And I just, I really look forward to the session tonight, and I'm grateful to you all and your current mayor for engaging in this regional conversation because we're not competing against each other as cities, we're competing against other regions. And it's about getting our region right and getting Pierce County to be a place where anyone who works in our county, whether they are a grocery store clerk or they own their own company, that they can afford to live in any community that they desire to live in, and especially the communities that they work in. So with that, John, I will turn it over to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I hope my camera and my microphone are on. And I think somebody on the UP staff was going to go through the slides. If not, I can try and, oh, great. There we go. Whoever is doing that, thank you very much. So my name is John Howell, as Mayor Woodard said, with Cedar River Group and my And my colleague is also with us tonight, Marty Coystra. Just so neither one of us drones on too long, we're going to do a little tag teaming here. I'll do a few of these slides, and Marty will continue doing a few. I, before we jump in, just, I can't tell you how lucky we feel to have followed the conversation that you just had, because it was such a great conversation starter about the range of ideas that are on the plate for you all to be considering, some of which you're going to see mirrored here in just a couple minutes. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, next slide. So as the mayor said, it's South Sound Housing Affordability Partners. And we're going to cover a couple of things here very quickly this evening. Sort of a how did we get here, a little bit of the history to get to this point that the mayor touched on briefly. The sort of the the main question, what is it that this entity, this organization SHAPE would do? And what's its value for a community like UP? What's the current status of our work and where are we in the process and what happens next? And then ultimately, what you will need to decide, what all cities who are considering joining SHAPE will need to decide. And we've got a couple of slides on that. And then any one of the four of us, we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Next slide, please. So Marty, I think you'll take it away.
Thank you, John, and good evening, everyone. So if we can go to the next slide, we'll just reiterate a bit of what you recently talked about when Clay was with you. And what you well know, we're just going to give you a couple snippets here that we've captured since 2017. One, we're growing faster than King County, and our rents prove it. In 2018, we saw this issue of Tacoma's median rent for two-bedroom apartment, matching that of Washington DC. Next slide, please. And in 2020, at the end of the year, we began this conversation about Zoom towns. So the pandemic has changed the dynamic of where we work and the work-life and housing jobs balance issue that we're all wrestling with in the region. And finally, at the end of the year, Spanaway tops the list of toughest places in the US by a home. Next slide, please. We also saw this come out at the beginning of this year, an analysis of rent changes. And you saw some significant decreases in rent in parts of King County. But if you look at the blue on the right at the bottom, you see that Pierce County is experiencing yet significant increases in rent. Next slide, please. So as Mayor Woodard said, this has been a journey. And some may call it a long and winding journey, but in reality, it's been very deliberate and has built a tremendous amount of rapport and trust amongst the various governments within Pierce County to get us from that point in October 2018 to where we got in the middle of the year last year, where the University of Washington Tacoma prepared a comprehensive report on housing issues in Pierce County. And we are on a good path. John will talk a bit more about that in a minute to see SHAPE become formal as an entity. Next slide, please. So the important thing really to wrestle with is what could this entity do? And what would its value be? And not only just to the region, but to you as a community. So next slide. This is a more detailed slide. It's a document some of you may have seen, and we can certainly get to you. But really, the important thing to note is there are a lot of potential things that an intergovernmental group like SHAPE could be working on. And it's important to acknowledge that that work would be determined by the jurisdictions and governments that are participating. Those that choose to become part of SHAPE actually construct what it does and accomplishes. And it works together to create a unified voice in the region for Pierce County. And I think the mayor did a stand-up job of sort of reiterating how we're stronger together and how we need to be stronger together to work on these issues as a region. Next slide, please. So just some quick points that I want to make sure are really clear. The work plan that would be accomplished and done by SHAPE is decided upon and designed by the executive board. It's not determined by anyone other than the executive board. SHAPE does not usurp any authority over your land use decisions or anything like that, where you're to become a participating jurisdiction. So the SHAPE staff, we assume there will be 1.5 staff hired to begin with, will work with each jurisdiction and government to create the service and support plans around the unique needs and interests of that community. So you coming up with your housing action plan feeds directly into the priorities of how you would be participating, should you choose to do so in this group. Next slide, please. And we know that those housing needs, while acute, vary from community to community. And so the work plan itself is going to be somewhat diverse. And it's also important to know that we want to make sure that SHAPE will not duplicate or do any work that's already being done by other entities. And then next slide. So three key points. What would SHAPE really do to help your community provide universal policy support and program development? Should you desire to have any of that, make unique staffing support available to help your staff work through some of your particular housing action plan issues? And hopefully, design and support some demonstration projects that get us more attainable, affordable, and accessible housing that can be replicated in communities throughout Pierce County. And John, I think the next slide is yours.
Okay, we just wanted to reemphasize that this is a coalition of the willing. This participation in SHAPE is a voluntary commitment on the part of governments across Pierce County. And we'll talk about the steps here to, that the governments are taking to consider joining SHAPE. Next slide, please. Okay, next slide. Give you a sense of where we are and where some of the communities are that have been at the table talking about SHAPE. The governments that, where the logos are shown on this slide, are ones that have expressed interest in reviewing and drafting a governmental agreement, have looked at preliminary budget numbers, have said they are interested in pursuing this discussion with their council. There are no final commitments yet, because actions will be required by each of the councils. But all those municipalities and governments with the logo have expressed keen interest. Those jurisdictions where the logo is not shown, it doesn't mean they're not interested, but they are not quite as far along in the discussions with their councils about SHAPE as the others. Next slide, please. So next slide, where we are is we are having conversations with councils across the county. Have several this week and next. We are trying to determine the level of interest that the various councils have in joining SHAPE. We have created a draft intergovernmental agreement that will be reviewed Wednesday of this week for the third or fourth time by a steering committee of elected officials who have been guiding SHAPE's development. And they give us the green light on Wednesday, we will be ready to distribute that draft intergovernmental to governments that would like to take a look at what the, what they would be agreeing to in joining SHAPE. And then by mid-year, hoping that decisions would be made by all those governments who want to participate. Next slide, please. So there are really two things that each government will need to decide upon. Next slide, please. This intergovernmental agreement that I have referenced is a lengthy, detailed agreement. I want to say something else here that maybe we should have said in the beginning. But this collaborative structure is one that the elected officials that Mayor Woodard's referenced, that she and Executive Danmeyer and Councilmember Lattenberg convened two years ago, they looked at where other regional collaborations are occurring to work on affordable housing. Two of them happen to be very nearby, three of them, sorry, one in St. Homish County and two in King County. And so we have used the interlocal agreements from those other existing collaborations to lay out a possible structure for SHAPE. And it deals with issues of governance, voting rights, the term of the agreement, how the structure would be administered, et cetera. Next slide, please. A financial commitment, since the the SHAPE would be created with 1.5 FTE in order to provide support to all of its members. There is a budget associated with that staffing level. And we have put together a preliminary budget based on population. The amount of the budget depends on the government's population. University Place would be roughly in the $11,000 to $15,000 a year range. And it's a range, because the ultimate number will depend on the number of governments who decide they want to join SHAPE. So, you know, on the on the low end, I think the 11,000 number assumes maybe 14 governments are members. At the high end, it assumes 10 governments are members. Next slide, please. And then lastly, this is all in service to what? It is in service to try and create a mix of housing types for a mixture of income levels. Hence, as Mayor Woodard said, what SHAPE is focused on is affordable, accessible, and attainable housing for multiple income levels. Next slide. I think that's the end of Marty's and my presentation. Maybe we could turn it over to Executive Danmeyer and then see whatever questions you may have.
Thank you, John, and I appreciate Victoria for covering for me when my internet crashed. Thank you, Mayor Woodards. This, this is important work. We've been been at this, as was pointed out, for two years with kind of the mayors from throughout the region coming together. And it was important when we were meeting, I can remember at one point asking, you know, every single, why are you at the table? What is important in your community? And it was interesting to listen to the answers that they all gave. Most of them were somewhat different, reflecting the nature of each community. But everybody had had reasons why they were concerned. The most universal reason was senior housing. Everybody mentioned the need to have good, affordable, senior housing. So that was one of the things that was in common. So this is, you know, when we started two years ago, we did not envision that we would be in a pandemic today. But I will tell you that the pandemic has has probably highlighted our needs to come together around this topic kind of more than anything else. As we look around right now, things are being exacerbated. You know, when Spanaway has the, is one of the hottest housing markets in the state of Washington, when the rents in outlying Pierce County exceed those of Capitol Hill in Seattle, we know we have an issue. And the only way we can effectively do it, I think, is if we come together and collaborate. That's the way we're going to do it. It's not a one-size-fits-all. It's a, everybody gets to keep their community, but we, you know, and their community character. But we need to know that that jurisdictional boundaries and how those policies interface and some of those kind of things really make a difference. And if we, if we try to do it on our own, we've been doing that for a long time. That's it. That's a challenge, but coming together will be stronger to do it. I'm excited. We're trying to get our demonstration projects going. We're looking at, as was talked about, some some new policies that we could consider kind of a toolkit at which we would all look at across the region. You know, looking at several demonstration projects. And when we come together, our advocacy voice down in Olympia is magnified. Pierce County and our jurisdictions have not been as strongly represented in the Housing Trust Fund calculations, the Washington State Housing Trust Fund calculations. So we've been behind. So this is about coordinating, collaborating, partnering, and and magnifying our voice down there as well. So with that, I really appreciate the time that you're giving us tonight. I know it's eight o'clock. You all have a lot of things going on. You've been going for a while. So with that, we'll open up to any questions people might have. Mayor Protim Worthington, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. And so a great opportunity to get some questions and some firsthand answers, council. Let's go ahead and use hands at this point. And I see Councilmember McCleskey and then the Councilmaker, excuse me, Councilmember Figaro. I see your hands are up, and others may well join. Look, Councilmember McCleskey.
Okay, thank you much again, Mayor Protim. That was a very exciting presentation. I liked the concept. I like the empowerment of a collective body, regionally focused. And so that a city isn't an island to itself. It's partnering. I like the thumbprint on diversity of housing stock. And and also keeping each city's feel and culture, I think, is really essential and important. Some of what I didn't hear was a little bit about the property owners and also the developers. How do they feed into the decisions and outcomes that that we have? I think we need to be sensitive to, you know, we have these wonderful dreams, but we need to have our feet on the ground and our heads in the sky so that we can be realistic, so that we can actually get actionable outcomes, tangible products. And also, if it's not going to be married right with the property owners, to encourage them to continue owning rental properties and to make those rental properties affordable and to have a working relationship with the property owners so that the evictions don't start to tick up when the property values go up and the housing stock and prices and accessibility, you know, becomes more arduous. And how can we marry those those things and to make it work for for both parties? I I don't have an, I don't have an answer, but so, but I'll look for this group for my answer. I'll look to the experts for that, to guide and lead the way. Because I think that's where the rubber band tension is is going to be. And also, the the quality of each particular city and their comprehensive designs and how they part partner in with with that. Because I know in University Place, we like to think that we have pretty high standards for builders to come in and and build. So we have an idea of quality, value, and very strong on community engagement. And one of the things that was intriguing is you, there was a mention of housing sustainability over time. And how is that going to work? You know, what goal is that? Would be, would it be 60%? Would it be 80%? You know, probably need to have some flexibility and and turnover. So and that leads into the housing stability. Placing, do we place controls on taxes? Or is our, is there, is, are we aligning with tax fees? Per permit growth? When we talk about controlling some of the assets, the cost of living increases? How does that impact when we talk about has the housing stability as well? And those on fixed income? So that we mitigate and address some of the potential displacements? so that we can meet that goal of aging in place, aging within your community? You know, are we talking about housing for all? And, and what does, what does that look like? Homeownership for all? So, you know, there's, I have a myriad of questions. I have, I read through your report, I have like three pages. But I'm going to stop there because I'm, because I'm really excited about the discussion and, and where it's all leading and going. I think it also dovetails into the, the transit components of what we talked about in, earlier on in the meeting and building out the infrastructure. So this is a huge deal. And if we can join an organization, we can give more bang for the buck and get better quality housing and diversity of choices in the long term for less financial outcome. I'm all for that as well. So thank you all for all your hard work. Because I know it was probably, it was probably fun to see all the mayors together, but I'm sure there was a lot of pushing and shoving and to get where, where, where you are today. So I appreciate you taking the ball and running that. Thank you very much.
Very good. Councilmember McCluskey, thank you. Any comments before I move on to Councilmember Figaro?
Mayor Proton, or the Executive Dan Meyer, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to say very quickly, you know, we, we did involve both public and private sector developers kind of early on, and the, both of those need to be developed. We've, uh, we have talked about the need for some kind of working with our two housing authorities within Pierce County. We've got the Pierce County Housing Authority and the Tacoma Housing Authority. We've talked about the need to do both public-private partnerships to develop this type of housing or housing options. But also that we have a need to make it work at a private sector level too. And to your point, we recognize that, you know, government, we have created a lot of the cost of housings through our codes and everything that we've done. We have made it expensive and impact fees and that we've got to find a way to do that. To Pierce County, I'm challenging our team to find a way to, you know, look at the kind of flexibility we would need from a code perspective to be able to develop, develop potentially 10 lots, kind of condominiumized, individual units on a one acre piece with a, with some common carports. So we're going to challenge ourselves to develop kind of, we got, we need more and more different types of housing. Thank you.
I, I was going to say something similar to Executive Dan Meyer's comment, which is if you choose that you want to take the next step and look at this intergovernmental agreement, one of the things you'll see embedded in it is the creation of an advisory body to advise the governing board of SHAPE. Just as you were talking a few moments ago about your advisory body for your housing action plan, this housing, this advisory body for SHAPE would include developers, renters, owners of property. So we're, we're talking about including the perspectives, Councilmember, that you had been describing a moment ago.
Very good. Thank you. That helps. There is a number of those comments. Great. Well, let me invite Councilmember Figaro for, to, to raise his questions as well.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Councilman Worthington. I'm not as enlightened by this collaboration. And the reason I'm saying that is not for adding bureaucratic bodies to the layers that we already have as a city. We have Pierce County Regional Council, we have Pierce County Regional Council, we have a comprehensive plan that is, you know, mandated from the state to the county to us, telling us about or telling, you know, where, how we collaborate. I should reword that, how we collaborate for, for better zoning and for better house. It was all ends up for better housing. And so we have this layers and layers of bureaucratic processes and bodies that are overseeing how we, 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 we add infrastructure and housing to accommodate the population. And so I'm not sold on this whole idea because I haven't heard one of the key things, except for Bruce, he did bring up the, the, the cost. We, you know, when talking about affordable affordability, where does, where did the cost, this extravagant cost for housing come from? It, it came from government, okay? The, the, a, a, 30%, 40% of the cost of housing is due to government costs and processes and, and, and fees and impact fees. And just the latest with the new billing code that got passed with the energy code that added another six, 6,000 plus per unit. So, uh, and it doesn't end. We, we have this clean energy. We have a banning of gas. All that adds cost, this is all from the government. So, you know, it's not about how are we going to go and find less help with, with drawing down the cost of lumber or materials or labor? Because a lot of those people, their labor, they're not increasing their labor cost. It's government cost or maybe some, in some areas, maybe there's an increase in labor cost. But in talking to people that I know that develop or builders of apartments, it's about government cost and government delays and government overlays of different processes. And so, uh, the one thing that, if anything, we should think about how we can collaborate on, on, uh, some kind of a master streamlined process for builders where they know when they build in one area, it's going to kind of be like the McDonald's cookie cutter. They're not going into another city municipality and all of a sudden changes all over again with different timelines and everything else. I, I don't buy into this collaborative and, and, and it's not a clear picture to me. You know, before I decide that I would want to jump in as a council member for our city, because it has to be a lot clearer as to what is that? What is this body going to do other than pay a 1.5 FTE? And, and what's that FTE is going to do? Uh, so I, there's still a lot to be done on, on understanding what, what is it that, that we are going to, this body is going to do that isn't already being done that really will, will impact the, in the reduction of government costs in affordable housing.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Councilmember Figaro. Any, I don't know if our presenters have any comments to that. I know Councilmember Keel has a question coming up as well.
So just really quickly, if I could, Mayor Proton, all those groups that you mentioned, Councilmember Figaro, are all government groups with the ability to do either big regulation or little regulation on you. This is a coalition of the willing. This is a collaboration, people choosing to come together and partner and encourage and challenge one another to do a better job. No regulatory authority. If it doesn't work, you can bail. But we want to, but we all know we've got to, that we'll be better off working together. And as I pointed out, one of the things that we need to do is, is find ways to create the flexibility that allows truly affordable, accessible housing to be created even by the private sector. We can't, you can't, government can't build their way out of this. We've got to engage the private sector. So we've got to find that kind of flexibility within our codes, flexibility within our zoning to do that. And I think once, once we see that demonstrated, that's something we can all learn from. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proton.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate the comments.
Mr. Mayor Proton, if I could just jump in and add, I think what's so, what, what is so great about this part, this process is that we don't have all the answers. And normally when we come to municipalities, it's all baked and we're ready to go to show you everything. The idea is that we, we as a region are building it together. And, and so getting in at the beginning means that you're a part of building the plane that you're then going to take a ride on. And so, and so I think having you to, having you all as a part of this to help answer some of those questions and to make sure that the needs of your community is lifted up is what's so incredibly important. That's why it's really important for us to make sure that we're talking to every jurisdiction in Pierce County so that we can do this together. And so that as, as Councilmember McCluskey said earlier, that each city is different. But there are some commonalities. And we want, the great thing that makes Pierce County what it is, is the fact that you can choose to live in lots of different cities who have lots of different characteristics and lots of different personalities. But, but, but the great thing about this is that we're building something that everyone's personality and every community's assets can come to the table and be a part of the work. And, and we can sell our region, not just our cities.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Woodard. So I appreciate that perspective. That helps. Uh, Councilmember Keel, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor Proton. I, I got a comment and, and then a question. You know, I, I, I'm like you guys, I'm in shock. It's been two years. I, I remember the first meeting. You know, traveling from UP was like really early in the morning. Thank you very much, Mr. Executive. And it was like a snow, it was snowing and icy and it was in Puyallup. And I had to drive from my little warm house in UP all the way across the county in the snow to uphill, both ways to get to Puyallup, you know. It was a, it, it was a great meeting and, and it just kind of evolved to this. You know, I, I, my comment is that I, I hear you very, very clearly, Councilmember Figaro. And, and I hope you know that, that I share a lot of your, your concerns. And, and I will tell you that, um, uh, I, I would not be as excited about this effort if, if I saw and understood the things that you outlined were a part of this. And so I would just encourage you to, to, to stick with us and keep reading and keep talking. And, and I think that as you go along, you, you will find that, that none of the things that SHAPE is about is about those things. I mean, what, what I had put into this as when I was mayor and I've also participated recently as, as a Sound Transit Representative in, in this effort too. And that is that this is a, just like the executive said, it's a, it's a coalition of the people that want to be a part of it, right? And it is not getting in our way, not adding more stuff to us. You know, basically you help us not get in our way and not dictate to us about what we want to do. And, and, and that's the piece that's still open-ended, the what it is that we want you to do part. And as Mayor Woodard says, if we get into this, get into this, then we get to help SHAPE that. But to your point, it isn't about adding regulation and stipulation dictating to us. And, and if it ever changed, if it ever turned into that, I would be the first person on this council to say we need to get out of it. Okay, so, so it's not, it's not that at all. The question I have is you, you heard our conversation earlier about all the plans we have with our housing and stuff like that. I'm curious, getting to Councilmember Figaro's point, is when you heard, you heard, and I'm glad you heard it. Based on what you heard, can you give us some examples of how SHAPE could help us with what it is that you heard us trying to do?
I may have been, of the four of us, I may have be the only one who heard the list that Clay and David walked through. So let me take a shot at that, Councilmember Keel. I was impressed with the breadth of the list. And I was impressed by how much work it will take to pursue a number of the items on that list. I just wrote down a few. I, I understand that you all have not decided that you want to pursue the full list that was presented to you. But just pulling from the list, small lot development, accessory dwelling units, inclusionary zoning, fee waivers, fast track permitting, dealing with development costs, infrastructure. On any one of those or on several of those, SHAPE staff could augment, could support the work that your team is doing. I, I, I listened to that list and thought that is a boatload of work. And the more hands on deck to dig into a number of those topics, the better off you're going to be to really explore them. And the second piece of that is by doing this in a collaborative way, to the extent Puyallup or Ordine or Lakewood or anybody else is doing something interesting in those areas, you've got a central staff that is able to bring that information to you to say, take a look at what Puyallup's doing. You may want to modify it a little bit, but they've got a really interesting approach to anything on that list that David and Clay walked through. So, Councilmember Keel, did that address your question?
It, it, it does, and I appreciate the answer. Thank you, Mayor Proton.
But certainly, Councilmember Keel. And John, by the way, good job. I'm glad, so glad you're here for part of that conversation. And for those that weren't, we, just before this item started, went through our, our housing action plan as an early draft. And these were some of the potential action steps. It's a long list, a daunting list, but one that could really make a difference in the community. And as you pointed out, we haven't selected what actions we're going to pick from that list. And I think you captured that accurately, but you also illustrated the job in front of us and it's significant. It's, uh, so I don't see any further hands at this point. It's going to take a little bit of liberty of my own to share a few quick thoughts on this, which is, this agenda today for our council meeting is focused on housing. It is from start to finish, it sort of happened that way because that's where the action is. And if you look around our state, that's where the action is. If you follow the legislature beyond the COVID issues, which certainly are front and center, and we all know desperately and dearly. But where the action is, is in housing and where the conflicts are is often somewhere in housing as well. We, we as a, we seem to be leading the nation in certain aspects of the market. We know that it's impacting our cost of governmental services. And we're looking for ways that we can improve the quality of life of our communities and our citizens that are in there. Housing is, is a key into that. It's one of our key steps. And certainly in my mind, as one of the council members, you know, I think that this is an area of interest as well. Whether we get into SHAPE or not, this council will be deciding. But it's certainly, I think, worth considering. And, and appreciate the timeliness of this. And it is really where a lot of the attention of the legislature is there. As, as County Executive Dan Meyer mentioned, it's also, some of this is about a legislative agenda and being able to focus our attention and our abilities, our connections and our minds to help the legislature bring the resources they have available for housing into the Pierce County communities. And to do that, we need to hold hands together. And I would welcome myself a chance to do that. Because that's how we get that attention. And that's where King County has exceeded some of the, the other counties, is their ability to do that in a united front. I think that makes a difference. So I wanted to share some quick thoughts and I see some advantages here. There are, I think, some issues about how, how government can, it can be intrusive and is intrusive. And we get to balance that in our community as council members. And so I look forward to moving on that. Does anybody have any closing thoughts or statements here as far as our council goes? If not, I have a few, a few things I'd like to make, a few comments, that is. Anything else from council members?
I'm, I'm interested in next steps for us on this topic, Mayor Proton.
Sure. So our next steps, one of them was for, to see if some, somehow I magically could see a clear consensus or a direction where we want to go here today. I have to tell you at the moment, I'm not so sure I see a clear consensus quite yet. But I do see some interest and a spark here that, well, we would like to move on. Now, Mayor Belice, if she was available, may see this differently. And she, she might have a different perspective. Certainly, I think we need to chat about this. My view is we need to talk about this a little bit further and then decide if we wish to. and then decide if we wish to uh uh move on and and consider this. The meanwhile, uh, the Shape uh Steering Committee, I believe, has some action in front of it for Wednesday. It's uh sounds like it's a a forward step for them that uh is important to that uh future organization. Look forward to hearing what comes out of that. And that might also help us consider which path the agency, uh, the future agency would be on, because it seems like that might start focusing attention on on to certain areas, if I understand uh what's coming out of Wednesday's meeting. Um, but uh, uh, so to your point, to your to your question, Councilmember Keel, I I don't see that clarity myself of direction. Uh, but I think we do, from the nodding heads I saw a few moments ago, uh, want to chat about this or have another opportunity to discuss this. I very much appreciate, though, having uh both County Executive Dan Myers uh participation tonight, along with Mayor Woodbirds, Woodbirds rather. And along also with John and Marty, who have brought some great information to give us the firsthand experience that we need to base our decisions on. Um, and so I appreciate that. Thank you very much for taking your time to do this and for staying on this important issue for all of us. So thank you for that as well. Uh, anything else, council members, before we move on to our our next fun housing-related topic, uh, multifamily tax exemptions? What could be more exciting? Uh, so uh, uh, but it is sort of the theme of the night. Uh, all right. Well, great. Again, thank you both. Uh, I thank you all for your comments. If you have any uh any parting words, we'd certainly welcome to hear them now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Porten. Members of the council, appreciate your time. If you have other questions, I'm sure we would be interested in answering them to make sure you have all the information you need. And dang, that University Place logo would really look good on that sheet at some point. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, Doug. That's great. Take care. All right. Great. Well, that was super. Well, let's uh get on with our discussion then about the multifamily tax exemption. I believe that uh David Swindale is going to be back to help us with that and with the help of Kevin Bruski as well. Uh, David, are you starting this one off?
No, I believe the city attorney is taking this one.
Sorry about that. Oh, I'm sorry, David. Did, yeah, I I bet I got, I go, I woke you up there, didn't I? Not that you were asleep, but it did. Okay.
No, I'm giving, I'm giving David just a slight spell on some of this, but I'm also joined by Kevin Bruski. Um, and but David's in the background nonetheless. Um, in keeping with our theme on housing tonight, you know, one of the things I I I'm calling an audible on some of my initially prepared remarks. Um, in terms of the agenda items and that we've talked about in the action items, you have to recognize that housing at the outset, it's a pretty big elephant, but how do you eat it? And with multifamily tax exemption and the legislation that you have in front of you, you know, the classic answer is one bite at a time. And what we've identified, I think, is a relatively easy to manage bite um towards at least a portion of the housing issues here within City of University Place. What you have in front of you tonight is a proposed ordinance that changes a part of the city's multifamily tax exemption code. Um, as you know, the state law allows for multifamily tax exemptions associated with certain multifamily properties on specifically related to the cost of the improvements over a period of time. State law currently allows for that exemption to be within an eight-year period or a 12-year period at the local jurisdictions option, you or or both. And University Place currently offers only one of those, which is the eight-year option. And in order to qualify for the multifamily tax exemption, um, the project has to be, as its name suggests, multifamily, meet a number of eligible requirements and also be located within what is known as a residential target area or an RTA. Since the code was originally put on the books back in 2013, the city has identified only one RTA, which is in the Town Center Overlay Zone. Has a result of a couple of things. Um, there's a staff recommendation before you tonight to do a couple of things, one of which is to expand the RTA together with some other requirements. Um, to put these issues a little bit in context, there's two confluence of factors, if you will. Well, there's arguably more, but but two I want to really focus on. Um, first, you may recall back in December, we passed Form-Based Code. And you probably thought, Form-Based Code, we were done with that. You know, what what this is sort of the what's next? And what's next is a series of legislation, some of which is going to come at us faster than others. This is one of those coming at us a lot faster. Um, where we've identified the need to increase and promote the availability of housing within our community. Uh, the second piece on with respect to this particular proposal for you tonight is following the passage, actually right around the same time as the passage of the Form-Based Code, the city was approached by um a group that was interested in doing some development within the Northeast Business District area um with what we believe is a catalyst project associated with rejuvenating some growth back to the area. In order for that project to go and bring some of the other growth and benefits associated to that area, it's necessary for the multifamily tax exemption to be expanded. So when we started looking at it, we started looking at putting together a legislative package for the council that largely consists of three parts. The first part is expanding the geographic reach to create a second RTA, which is the Northeast Business District. The second that we started looking at was what changes structurally to the code do we need to make itself in order to make this work? Under our current code, um, we follow what is sort of a will grant requirement associated with these multifamily tax exemptions. That is to say, if you meet our requirements, that is to say, you're you're doing work in a residential target area. You're building our code provides for a minimum of 10 multifamily properties, and you follow the other requirements, we will grant you the exemption. And so I said, look, are there other requirements that may make a difference as we go about this that ultimately get to where the city's trying to go, also providing housing? And as we went through that process, we identified two of them. Um, the first goes hand in hand with Form-Based Code, which is, we want to make sure that the project complies with our design standard review, um, which was a big thrust of the Form-Based Code. The second is that we also wanted to incentivize certain sizes of development. And so when we started looking at it, and this is reflected in the draft legislation, of we're putting together a proposed development size of a minimum of 24,000 square feet. That is to say, and I I think Kevin can probably speak a little bit more to the numbers. Um, but essentially sizable projects, not not your smaller projects, but we wanted to make sure that the project was sizable enough that it would incentivize, get the growth in there and truly have an impact. Uh, so before you tonight, like I said, or for study tonight is a draft ordinance. Um, and I think between the three of us, we can certainly answer the questions. I'm I'm mindful of the time. Um, also scheduled, you took action on it earlier tonight with respect back on the consent agenda was that you formally affixed a public hearing for next for our next council meeting on the 15th for the community to weigh in and provide input on the establishment of the second RTA. So with that, I'll stop to catch my breath, see if David or Kevin have anything to add. Um, and then barring that, um, we'd be happy to answer questions from council.
I I have um just the, you know, this is not necessarily a project-specific um proposal. It is um, it does apply to the entire mixed-use uh center area, which is uh one of our new Form-Based Code zones where you have uh mixed use as well as standalone uh apartments that are not or yeah standalone apartments that are not on a frontage, uh arterial frontage. Um, if they are in arterial frontage, they'd have to have a mixed-use commercial component with them. And it in covers the entire area of not only the Narrows Plaza, uh, the Narrows Theater, the Bowling Alley, uh, and the area of the old Safeway up there. Um, and uh, the fast food restaurants at Line Mildred, that whole entire area would be within this target area. Uh, so it's not just the two parcels. Uh, and uh, again, it's not a project-specific proposal, but an area's target area. That's all I have. Kevin, do you have anything?
Okay. Very good. Well, council, any questions? And I do see Councilmember Fleming's hand is up, and would you like to start us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Porten. Man, I, since my last conversation on on this co- on this topic, I I went and started digging in my notes and something popped into my head as I read through those. And that is, well, this proposal we have before us targets a geographical area in University Place. We also have, I as I recall, seven projects in the pipeline somewhere throughout the city. Would at some point, what would preclude other developers working on those projects to come in and saying, hey, we created this um special district up in the the north end of UP, why can't we replicate it in another area of UP and create uh additional tax exemptions uh to build those projects? Other than the council simply saying no, but if we set a precedent for one uh area and and projects, what would preclude others from saying, well, we want the me-too uh inclusion on that as they uh proceed to development?
Sure, sure. And and I want to look at it from two different lenses for you. One is the developer approach, and the second is sort of the city approach, assuming that you are agreeable to this. Um, under state law, state law vests the local jurisdiction with the exclusive authority to determine whether that this is in fact a residential target area. That is to say that it's located within an urban core, it's an area that the city has identified um has needing residential development. I'm being a little loose with the factors, mindful of the time. But it's exclusively within the city's prerogative. And what you've done with the Form-Based Code is you've identified approximately 480 acres of the city that you've incentivized for development. Now, between the Town Center Overlay and the Northeast Business District, admittedly, it doesn't cover all 480 acres. But what it does is it starts to identify where are the areas that the city is providing a particular emphasis. Now, if, for example, if some of those other projects, if somebody came in and said, hey, look, you know, we think that this is necessary for this particular area, we're going to evaluate that particular area. Is it part of the the regional target, the regional growth center? Um, is it an area that is associated with growth and development and appropriately affects a public hearing? If the city wants to say, sure, you can do that. And quite frankly, some of that, those discussions, we very well may be having as we start to look at expanding other parts of these RTAs. For example, the Town Center Zone, you know, we may be running or run that further south, you know, as we go through that, but we're probably not quite there yet. But on the other hand, if we wanted to say no, there's nothing to stop the city from saying no. That's not so much a legal call as it may be another call. So I hope that answers your question, gets to that concern.
Well, but along those lines, you know, obviously, the thing that always sits in the back of our minds is, you know, what is our current uh co- operational cost, what's our current debt, what's our current debt capacity? And how much can the city absorb, I guess? And I don't know the answer to this. I don't know if anyone knows the answer to it, but how much can the city absorb in tax exemptions for properties that keep everything moving forward?
You you know, and I I know we we have some numbers if David and Kevin want to weigh in a little bit more with some of this too, is when you're looking at trying to develop the property, you know, I mean, if you were to run run it over an extended period of time and undeveloped or an underdeveloped property over an extended period of time, you know, that that's your baseline. On the other hand, if you've been able to incentivize the development and forego, say, eight years of the local share of tax revenue, are you still better off? Uh, and I don't know if you guys want to necessarily, because I know we have run some of those analyses.
I thought I saw some. I I know we ran it on on the one property that's been proposed, but I'm I'm looking a little bigger in the city and saying, if all the projects that are out there follow the same trend that we're looking at this property, what's that impact for the city, I guess, is a better way to phrase the question.
Yeah, the question is, um, you know, with the project at hand, uh, they ran the numbers, uh, and we had our own consultant, we hired out of Portland, run the numbers and found that um the project would not be feasible without the multifamily tax exemption. Uh, and we know from that project that over the course of eight years, uh, the developer would see a cost savings of approximately $4 million. But if we look at the fact that that might not occur because it wouldn't pencil, we would end up with a vacant lot uh for the foreseeable future, maybe a megachurch in the theater and um or something else or nothing at all, because nothing would pencil there. Uh, so we look at then uh over a 20-year period, what could we expect to get not only in um, um, the, uh, well, just in the property tax, it would be um more like uh $6 million that the city would make. Uh, or our portion of $6 million, if you would, in the property tax um exemption. Likewise, we do have other projects that, as you said, are in the wings and will likely come in and ask for the same thing. Uh, the same thing occurs there. We we can look down at Grandview Plaza. How long is that piece sat vacant and underdeveloped and a blight? Um, we have a chance to get some redevelopment there. Shag doesn't need our tax break because they're low income already and get a tax break. Uh, but another development that's being uh contemplated there could go forward and replace that. The first eight years, yeah, we have a sacrifice. But over the long term, uh, there would be a substantial amount of of revenue for the city.
So Dave, uh, uh, my question's still not being answered. May maybe it's myself that's not asking it right. I'm I'm not saying that we say no, I'm I'm making the assumption that the council says yes. Um, and we do that. So I'm not looking at properties that are vacant, stained vacant. I'm saying, how much tax exemption on parcels can the city do and still uh be sustainable?
Well, the the um
All the properties that are that are out there waiting uh to see what we decide on this one, or or do we have limited numbers that we can grant that to?
Uh, no, I don't think there is. Um, I think you're, you know, it's up up to the city council, but um we can evaluate every project as it comes in, as it as a proposal comes to you and make, you know, look at it at that point in time. But I would, um, I think I would be safe to say that um, not only would you get an increase uh in property tax revenue over the long term, you'd get construction sales tax that you may not otherwise get. And what we've learned from COVID uh is that we made $250,000 more tax, sales tax revenue because of the all the people buying online. If we get those more citizens, if you would, now, all of a sudden, some of those citizens uh are are paying more retail tax. And and we've known for a long time that in general, residential development does not pay for itself, not for the facilities and services that are required to serve it. And I know that's been a concern of several city council members. Um, but I think with the the three revenue sources plus uh a substantial amount of park and potentially traffic impact fees, uh, I I believe that um it'll benefit the city in the long term.
Okay, so my my parting request is this. Uh, Eric Faison, in his presentation to the council, said in 10 years, the city budget goes red. Um, and and we need to be looking for additional revenues to to offset that. Could could you at some point let us know how does this proposal or proposals help the city either steer that off, resolve it, or does it exacerbate the problem? Because these are overlaying um issues. You know, we got a budget that's declining and we've got eight years of exemption uh on taxes. What's the impact? And I I guess I'm trying to connect dots here, so it all makes sense in the end.
No, I understand. Um, the cost of government keeps going up and up and up and revenues are um not keeping up.
Yeah, okay. Well, Councilmember Fleming, thank you. And I think you've articulated your question very well, particularly towards the end. I also believe we have some tools that can help us do some projections specific to this or perhaps other projects and give us an idea what those positive or negative impacts are. Uh, and it's, you know, it's in my view, a very valid question. Uh, it's one of the things we need to be certain of. But the economics of residential development, at least in some cases, I believe, has shifted in the last few years. Uh, and uh, uh, in terms of the long-term economics, but we'll, those models can tell can help us. So in any case, uh, Councilmember Figaro, your hand is also up, and we're scheduled to end in about 15 minutes. We have some brief comments from the city manager and the rest of council. If you choose, council comments follow this evening rather than the middle of the meeting. And that's just how the agenda Council comments follow this evening rather than the middle of the meeting, and that's just how the agenda came together. But Councilmember Figaroa, what's your, please, your question or comment?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Matt, you mentioned something in answering councilmembers, Fleming's question or comments was something about. And I'm not going to work this correctly, but something about. Areas being designated or is being looked at as growth centers or whatever, like, you know, what we've did with the. With the sub area planning, but. In order to. Be legitimate toward providing for taxes exemptions. But in fact, the whole city has been given that just by the fact that we accepted. The designation from the Puget Sound Regional Council. To accept the population and affordable housing, to me, that designation. Puts a footprint on the whole city. Okay, as far as I'm concerned, so the whole city is eligible for us to be thinking in this way because. We said we need every piece of property out there for, for. Affordable, well, multifamily or for to accommodate the growth. And so. I would. Debate that we are limited to the sectors that the form paid base codes identified or this other projects. That are not supposedly project specific, but I think the whole, the whole city, we've already done so by the fact that we accepted the. The Puget Sound Regional Council designation, number one, number two, you can come in and that's some more after I'm done here, but. The other one is, why does it have to be eight years or ten years? Can we do, go down to five years? Can we go down to three years? Does some of those, the performers could work on some of this project. By giving them a tax break on the first three years. Could be four years, there's no, and I'm not sure if there is any, you know. Break in time that we can say, you know, we'll give you tax break for three or four or five depending on, on the size as well. And my. What, as a comment, I'm not sure if it's, if it was a. Question, and that is. And it gets into what Councilmember Fleming was talking about is, is the cost or where we're at with, with our budgets. All our property taxes go toward law enforcement, our contract with Pierce County continues to grow. And, and as has been mentioned. We're going to be in the red. Now, we did do some things here recently that extends that much beyond. To our favor because of the utility tax, but the fact is. Is that we have no control how some of these things are going to change. And especially that that's if it's just stays stagnant on the amount of law enforcement we have for the city. If we do accommodate for the growth and we do allow for this multifamily, which we want to, because we said we would. Then there's going to be more people. I would imagine at some point, there's a, there's like a breaking point for the, for the amount of sheriffs we have. Or the shifts that we have in our city to provide us with public safety. So those are the things that, you know, how do you, how do you continue to provide that public safety? And in increased costs and staffing and shifts. For the increased population. If we do this exams, whereas all the, all the income, all the property tech goes towards that. And I think I'll stop there for now, but those are the things that are just popping out.
All right, let me take your comments in no particular order. Because I think one of the things that your comments highlight is actually sort of a, you know, where, where do you want to go? But let me take the easy one first, which is under state law has its currently drafted, it is only an eight. Or a twelve, there's a proposal in the legislature right now that's looking at possibly a twenty or further extensions of that. So you, those are, those are sort of the choices that you have to work with right now. And the key difference between those two is that the twelve also has an affordability, an affordable housing component. That has to be built in in terms of unit size, that sort of thing. That's built in and that's, that's not part of the recommendation that we're looking at for today. Okay, so, so that's the easy one. Let me, let me take the, the public safety budget component together with the size component here. Because as, as I'm hearing both the comment and the observation. That there's an easy answer to this, which is we can run some numbers and get back to you on some of those numbers and see what we can do about that when we reconvene on this back on the fifteenth. But the one concern I would voice to you is this. Is if you, assuming that you could make the whole city a residential target area. I don't think you want to go there. Because you, there are areas where you don't want to concentrate growth, you want to be able to pinpoint, this is where I'd like to focus my growth. And not have growth, and that's been something that the council's been pretty clear about in terms of preserving the single family residence, so residential neighborhoods there at city. But if you did do that, you're, you're opening up the whole city and arguably exacerbating the very issue that you've identified in terms of. How do we maintain long term sustainability of our public safety budget? If we're targeting a smaller area, and you've seen the map, it's included in the council packet, it's not a particularly big area. So you're able to see within that small framework, what are truly the impacts? On the city's budget, assuming that they all came in and they all applied for multifamily tax exemptions. And the like, you're able to sort of to contain. The negative impacts that you might see associated with the budget. As opposed to if you open up the whole eight square miles of the city of University Place, so I just simply would ask you to keep that in mind. As the discussion go forward, having said that, there's nothing stopping the council, there's a staff recommendation identified in the map for. The, the particular area, if you're looking at maybe adding some additional parcels in there, you know, let's have that discussion, I know it's late tonight. But I think as David made the comment in his opening remarks, you know, we looked at it, kind of followed the zone. And associated with the newly enacted form based code. And so that's an easy spot as any to start, but if you're looking at saying, hey, there's some additional lots on the north side of twenty seventh or insight on seventieth, we can have that discussion. That, that's, you know, we're not wedded to that, but I just ask you to maintain a sense of perspective when you're trying to scope. You know, the impacts together with the offsets, if that makes sense.
Thank you, very good explanation.
All right, thank you, and in a moment, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Keel, but I believe we are going to need an extension to something like nine fifteen. If someone would like to offer that, we could take action on it, we still have a report, city manager report and others.
Councilmember Figaroa makes a motion to extend our regular, our study session to nine fifteen.
There's a motion and a second, motion, maybe Councilmember Figaroa to extend the study session time to nine fifteen. Are there any objections to the extension? If not, we consider that passed by unanimous consent. All right, so we're extended and with that, Councilmember Keel.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, so. David, Matt, Kevin, thanks for the presentation, I think it's a really good one. I, I do share the, you know, the concern about, you know, where the number is, you know, as far as, you know, what we can stand. But I also understand the answer around, it's kind of a one off, you take them one at a time and you kind of look at it, but. But my hope is, is that there is some type of a plan by staff that looks at. Kind of like the, all the properties we have available, I remember there was some work that. Staff did, Marisa and, and, and city manager and others. That identified nine hundred, I think, properties that are, you know, opportunity properties, I think it was the name. And we, we had hired a consultant to kind of take a look at these and. They were turning cranks and looking at what things could be and how we can help, and so. We, we, we talked about that and I was really excited about it and I think staff was, then all of a sudden, we stopped talking about it. You know, at least I haven't heard any, a lot about it and about what we're doing with it. I, I, I think something like that would help me. Get at an understanding of where this can all go, I mean, what's the possibility of all, all of the stuff that's out there and how we would. Address these one offs, you know, every time someone comes up, do we give them that or not? I think the Councilmember Figaroa's point about. Can we adjust the? The number of years to like a three year or five or six or two and a half, you know. You know, would be, would be of interest for me to, to explore too as well, because all of those things. It does too, it helps them figure out what can pencil for them, but also helps us to figure out what can pencil for us, right? So that we, so that we're not having those, you know, long years where we, we don't have, we're not able to collect the tax. So I, I think there's, you know, it isn't, it shouldn't be a cookie cutter, there needs to be, I think, some more. Staff work around what this end game is going to look like. And what the possibilities we have as council to, to, to work. With what we have, the tools that we have, so that we have a, a, a clear, a clearer picture. Right now, it's kind of foggy.
Okay, very good, thank you, Councilmember Keel, and David, I see your hand is up, you have a comment?
Yes, those ninety opportunity properties, I wish we had nine hundred, but it's just ninety. And the opportunity properties, a number of them are actually, let me put my hand down. Lower hand, okay, so a number of those are those exact same properties that we have been talking to the property owners. Including the Haps property and the Gaylord, you've heard about recently with the sports complex coming in. The old Red Apple site, that's obviously one that we've identified an opportunity property. The Narrows Bowl, we talked to that property owner, we haven't really talked to the Narrows Theater people very much. But that's certainly an opportunity property we identified during that process, as well as forty two oh one, the old. Dilapidated duplexes that Borges used to have, so we are making progress on those opportunity properties and, and we continue to engage when we can. And Nemo's too. That's it.
Okay, very good, so a quick list is at least some of our opportunity properties, appreciate that. So I had a question and I'm going to jump in here with that and maybe a bit of the statement too, so. And let me start with the statement, which is, in, in my mind. When we have this tax exemption or incentive truly, we have very, very few incentives. We do have certain areas that we view, and any community will have certain areas that they or we view. Are important to our future, either because we want change or we see a specific opportunity. Or because they are really the key to opening a new, new future for us. We need to have some way to highlight that and to bring those things about, and I think we have both. We have several of those things in front of us here, if that is the old Red Apple site, someplace that has had a lot of public interest in having it changed. To what we think, we think the future in a number of ways is tied to. The Narrows Plaza area or properties nearby. And we know that that needs a certain amount of economic. Momentum in order for it to work, because there's a lot of shared economic costs before it can all come together, such as sewers, such as other, other key issues there. If we can bring incentives, and this is one of them, to those areas, that makes sense, but to dilute that incentive and say, pretty much citywide, you can do it. We, we lose that special power, we, our superpower is gone, and that is a challenge. Because we have to be careful with that superpower, or it means really nothing special. So just a quick observation, David, in our notations that you have tonight. You had mentioned, it says that we have a threshold of twenty four thousand square feet. Why is that twenty four thousand instead of twenty five or twenty two or whatever? And I was also curious, how does that compare to the CIPA commercial threshold, when commercial projects need CIPA and when they don't?
Okay, I'm going to turn the twenty four thousand square feet over to Kevin Brisky, because that was his recommendation. And the CIPA threshold for commercial is, I believe, forty thousand square feet, four thousand square feet? Or forty parking spaces, four thousand.
So four zero 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 square feet?
Four thousand.
And I, is that's, that's the, we're at the maximum there, I think, for by the state.
We can look at our category, our categorical exemptions, I'll have to get back to you on that one.
Another day, at another time, we don't need it at the moment, but thank you, that, I appreciate that, Kevin, why is the number what it is?
Yeah, twenty four thousand was, came up with, that equates to about a thirty unit project. On average, and so that would be a thirty unit multifamily project or potentially a sixty sixteen unit townhome project. So we're trying to come up with a number that would be of something of substance. Really feel that something too small does not need the, the benefit. Whereas something of larger scale is where the benefit would be needed to make something viable. And so with not doing a direct unit count, by doing a square footage, it allows the developer a little bit of flexibility, maybe they'll have a few more. Studio one bedrooms, or maybe they'll have a few more two bedroom or three bedrooms. So the unit count might be a little, you know, more than thirty to get to twenty four thousand or a little bit less than thirty to get to twenty four thousand. So that, that's where the number came from.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate that on point answer, great, Councilmember Figaroa, you had another comment? Muting, muted, sir.
Okay, excuse me, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, we're coming to an end here, and just so that to help you and staff out. As a council member, I look forward to this being moved forward for us to. Come to a conclusion towards this superpower authority we may have. Because I think it will be good for us, I think we're heading in the right direction, thank you.
My turn to be muted and did it to myself, all right. I was saying, it looks like we're coming to an end to our discussion, we're ready to move on to our next and final agenda item, and. Seems like I, it looks like all our council members agree, so with that in mind, Steve Suck, city manager, has some comment for us, and. Steve, if you'd like to add that, then council will have a chance to make comments as I will as well.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and council, real quick, last Tuesday, Mayor Pro Tim Worthington, City Attorney Matt Kaser and I attended a meeting. By County Executive Bruce Danmeyer concerning street racing. There was eleven cities and towns representatives represented in that meeting, so great attendance. The county exec is leading the charge on this, they're looking at policy options like tiered impound. Tiered impounds, stay out of racing ordinances. Stay out of areas of racing ordinances, similar to what Sumner has and others, and I've sent you a previous copy of that. Bruce, County Exec is also pushing forward a state funding request. And he's preparing a letter to the Pierce County delegation in Olympia. To pursue some state funding, more on that later. And we're also, he's also putting together a coordinated messaging, which will be a part of, but we're excited about his efforts and. Again, a collaborative effort trying to attack this at a regional level instead of city by city, so that's my report, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Suck, appreciate that, do any of the council members have any comments, the final comments, reports they would like to make, I will have one brief one. Okay, all right, I don't see folks at this point, then let me move on with my comment, which is, I just wanted to get on council's radar. We do have planned a special meeting, yes, coming up on March twenty second at six thirty, that's the fourth Tuesday, the fourth Monday of the month. A special meeting. And at six thirty, as I mentioned, so that's going to be dealing with council goals, we'll have more information about, for that, Mayor Polisi will. Keep us informed about that, and I think you're going to find an invitation in the beginning of this week, coming to your mail for that as well. And then Michael will, I believe, be available for that, I'm looking for confirmation. Don't hold me to that one, but I believe he's coming back to facilitate for goal sitting session and building on our retreat work from, from January. If there are any, aren't any other comments? I think we're, we're ready to, to wrap up this evening, thank you all, and appreciate again Mayor Woodards and. Executive Dan Myers' participation, and I hope you have a great couple of weeks until next time. All right, take care, have a great night.